Good evening, everyone. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Here.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Present.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Present.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask you to give us guidance tonight and give us discernment to make decisions for our kids, for our community. Just ask you that you continue to keep your hand of protection over all of our schools, our administration, all of our teachers, all of our staff, everybody that works here and everybody that attends here and comes in and out of these doors. Just protect us and guide us and lead us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Just time I'm going to look for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Come in.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next on the agenda is presentations. First, we have Butler Tech update from Mr. Yorin.
Good evening. Good to see you all. I'm going to reach over this cord, Mrs. Spiege, and hand you... These are invitations to the groundbreaking at the Aviation Center and Bioscience Center.
Thank you so much.
There's one for each one of the board members. And when you guys decide what time you're going to go, give me an email on eleven now you're going to be there. No, it will be a good experience. Most of the time, I start off with talking about some highlights from students. But you guys should be getting a digital version of that thing that I passed out, that pamphlet. Are you getting that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Check your email real closely, Gary and Gary Gabber, and let me know if y'all aren't getting those.
Yeah, sure.
But they should be coming to you by way of email.
Do you want it to be from Butler Tech?
Butler Tech. Okay, we'll double check. Because they're no longer printing them. Last meeting, we had to start off with the recognition of our retirees. And I have to point out that we did have a retiree that was of notes, and that was Mr. Terry Spiege. And Mr. Spiege was there as well. So Terry had, I don't know how many, thirty something years.
Thirty four.
Yeah. And you know, I want to say something, Miss Spiege, about him because he always took on the most difficult students. And I think he relished that and enjoyed that. So he did a wonderful job over the years.
I've trained him real well, many of them.
You did. You did. You did a great job. So you have the invitations to the two groundbreakings. It's exciting. The aviation building is going to be over by where the Warbirds hangar is. You'll have access to it from Route Four. I think that's what that highway is, goes past on that end. And then the Bioscience Center, the addition's going to be about thirty-two thousand square feet. And they'll expand some of the programs they already have and think they're going to add some new ones as well. Another, I'm going to a meeting next week on Thursday morning at the Vora Campus, which I didn't know what Vora Campus was until I went there. And it was the Knightsbridge Champion International Headquarters Building on the river. And Miami University and Butler Tech have become partners on that project. And it's going to a center on engineering. And it's a neat place. It's huge. Lauren and I did a fight the other day and she said, "What are they going to do with all that?" I don't know, but usually they fill it up eventually. So there'll be some really neat programs going on for engineering. It's exciting. Parents, if you're here, I encourage you to take a look at what Butler Tech has to offer your student. And it's a pretty neat place.
Mr. Gagan and Mr. Stapleton will be at that meeting on Thursday as well.
Great. Great. All right, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Yorin.
Good to see you all.
Good seeing you.
Good to see you.
Next up, we have employee recognition.
Yes, I just would like, as Elisa walks up this way, just like to remind our board and our public that our mission is that Edgewood encourages every student, every voice, every passion. And one of our goals is to really try to do a better job engaging our people and through building relationships. And one of our recognitions, I know Elisa will talk to you about what we're trying to do to recognize our employees more.
Absolutely. We met as part of the strategic plan. And one of the things that they had requested, the group had requested is that we bring back those Edgewood extraordinary employees. And we were able to do that this year. We had classified, we had Candy Schluter. And she was selected because she's a very student-centered, customer-service-oriented and a person who engages with our community. She has a friendly face and the students share how they come in having a bad day. They're always coming in late as one after the bad day. And how she can just flip that script for them. So Candy Schluter is at the high school. Certified Employee of the Year was Kevin McDonald. And he is a teacher that is fair, consistent, student-centered, and has the ability to build relationships that contribute to the overall climate and success of the school culture. This year, we had what we refer to as the Rising Star. These are our employees who have been with the district less than five years. And the classified Rising Star, what is Rusty Breellove, he is described as a person who bleeds blue, extremely accommodating, will do anything to improve or enhance the district. Our community describes Edgewood as family, pride, community, and tradition. And it's felt that Rusty embodies these characteristics. And we're certified staff. We have Lindsay Aldridge. She is a positive person and a problem solver. Mr. Phil Potase said he has never seen her mad or upset. And when there's a problem, she doesn't complain, but offers ideas and solutions. She represents the middle school in a positive manner and is highly visible as our athletic administrator at Edgewood Middle School. Also wanted to take a minute to let you know that Jim Sorata, the SRO for the Edgewood Intermediate School, on July thirty-first received an award. He was recognized by Governor DeWine and the Ohio School Safety Center for receiving the Stand Out Staff Award at the Ohio School Safety Summit in Columbus. And what he's done, this is such an interesting, interesting thing. He runs what he calls an individualized recess plan, where he works with students on physical activities where the students can practice appropriate behavioral choices in a safe and supportive environment. And he is the only person in Butler County who is a behavior intervention coach. So he maintains the IRP program as a way to assist in addressing student behavior. And he makes such an effort to check in with students who struggle behaviorally on a daily basis. So wanted to take a minute just to acknowledge those people and the things that have gone on. We also wanted to take a minute to, and I know we have some of our new staff here. Some told me they wouldn't be able to join us tonight. But why don't you recognize our new staff? If you had, were able to join us tonight, if you'd stand up, appreciate that. So we can put a name with your face. We have Danny David. This is at DECC. Clayton Lawson, Melanie Schuckman, Giselle Thomas, Stephanie Thompson, Lauren Barna, Liz Winstead, and Natalie Yan. At the primary school, we have Rachel Lucas and Giselle Thomas who's working at both those buildings. We also have at the intermediate school Cassidy Bell, Jade Benner, Hannah Baum, Heather Davis, Sydney Hall, Tracy Lefford, Molly Mertz, Lacy Page, and Kelsey Purk. The middle school is Chris Barnes, Tyler Heinz, and Chatty Coon. In the high school, we have Ronald Baker, Allison Cassidy, Xavier Bugate, Garrett Gabber, Rebecca Heckman, Pam Hodgson, Jeff Keen, Sherry Orr, Jennifer Reader, Kayla Van Den Enden, and Ryan Metter. So we're so excited to have them join us here this year. We have Angela Holland, Melanie Schuckman, and Trace Reynolds at the district level. In transportation, we have Joe Isom and Randy Ross. So appreciate you coming out tonight and joining us.
They still have smiles on their face, so that's a very good sign.
Glad to be there. Service awards during our time together, during our opening day. We started our service awards this year with a moment of silence for Clay Mannix. Clay was to receive his twenty-year award with us. So just to put some names up there for you, these people, we're so glad to have people who are running this race with us. So we had five-year, ten-years, fifteen-years, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, and thirty-five years for Ms. Lana Heller. She has been driving, I'm sure, many of you up on the stage, as well as many of our own children over the years. So we just appreciate, appreciate everyone who has been a part of our district and stayed with us. Just I find it always kind of interesting that twenty-four of the people who received a service award graduated from Edgewood. And five of those people also are what I call a part of the Edgewood merger. They are married to someone here in the district. Maybe that's a key longevity in the district. But those are all people who also, many of the people are raising their families here. So that's a great thing when people come here and decide to make Edgewood their forever home. So thank you.
That's an impressive list. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Welcome to Edgewood, King. Thank you for coming. It's nice to meet you.
Next up, we have treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start, please?
Yes, sir. The first agenda item is a motion to approve the board minutes from the regular board meeting on July twenty-second.
Looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of July twenty-second. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler. The next agenda item is the July twenty-twenty-four financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the July twenty-twenty-four financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Any discussion? Got a couple freezers break?
Due to their age, just like to note that.
Yeah, I think one of those twenty-two years old. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next agenda item is the FY twenty-five EPC Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program Resolution.
Looking for a motion to enter into the twenty-twenty-five cooperative school bus purchasing program that we've used many times before.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Did we buy any buses last year?
We bought one special needs bus.
The year before, we didn't buy any. But the year before that, we bought two.
We got two, yeah.
Yeah.
So how many were planted above this?
We're hoping to get two buses. We want to get back on that rotation of two buses a year. We actually pulled those out last year and weren't going to get any. And you might recall that our special needs bus was having problems. We were missing us fair and... So we want to get back on that rotation and get two buses a year.
So that's the only one we got last year was the special need bus.
On special need bus.
That was a B bus?
It was new.
Yeah, we ended up wanting another train.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft. Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to block Agenda Items D, Warren County ESC Service Contract, and E, the valid refrigeration code.
Looking for a motion to approve D and E as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Any discussion on that?
So this Warren County ESC contract, this is for one student, correct?
Yes, it is.
Eighty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Do we recoup any of that money through state programs?
We will file for catastrophic costs. We get a large portion of that back. We won't get it all, but we'll get a lot back. We'll file. I gave you a brief summary on the back of your agenda from Miss White who couldn't be here to kind of explain the reason for placement.
Just kind of an eye-popping sum of the best. Look at that. And there's... For sure.
It's hard to understand, but need to...
Sure.
Any more discussion on that?
I think we're good.
You good, Lauren?
I'm good.
Okay. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is an MOA from the city of Trenton.
I'm going to ask this to be tabled for one more month for the information we were looking for did not come through. I'm just going to ask for it to be taped. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. We was looking to get some information about this and we kind of got some verbal. We never got anything in writing, so I'm not going to go something off of verbal. I don't feel comfortable doing that.
Yeah, I agree with you. I would say, though, that, you know, I would like to act on this as soon as possible. I think it's the right thing to do with the city of Trenton. But I also understand we've got some questions that we're waiting on answers for. And I agree with you here. I think it needs to be written down, what the responses are, so that we make sure we're making the right decision when we do this.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate that.
Do we need to vote on that or not?
We need to vote on table, I think.
Yeah.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll to table?
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is a donation from First Baptist Church for school supplies.
I'm going to look for a motion to approve the donation from First Baptist Church for school supplies.
So moved.
Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft. Motion carries five zero.
Very nice of them to do that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
The last agenda item is just informational items from the treasure. We did finally get a posting. We haven't received our second settlement, but you can see a pending mail. And we are seeing that the Rockies Pipeline is settling. So that is a positive for us, that that money's going to start coming through as well. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Do you have any idea how much it is?
Have they made a payment or...?
It's just delinquents that have been collected. I thought I had that new spreadsheet. It's, no, it's not a million. It's a... Our payment was up. I'm wanting to say it was like seven hundred thousand higher than... Yeah, seven hundred thousand higher. So that's good for us. We've been waiting on that for a while, so...
Is that to make us whole?
I think that we're going to see some in the next payment as well. I don't know that this is all of it. I just started throwing this on a spreadsheet today and noticed when I looked on here that our money was up to one point one three six.
That should have been one point five, I believe, originally.
So maybe that's half of it.
I would like to run the numbers and get that for you before I give you that. But it's substantial, what we received in this.
So does this mean we'll see this money every year or is this just...?
This is delinquent money. So they have been paying at a tender rate. What I was told today, and this is again just hearsay with some treasures talking, that they had asked for fifty-something percent. And I'm wanting to say it was twelve percent that they agreed to. So again, I just started getting all this today, so I don't know exactly what they wound up settling for. I'll have to dig into that later.
What you just...
They had asked, the Rockies Pipeline had asked for like fifty-two percent or something like that. And they wound up settling for like twelve percent. So they were paying at what they call a tender rate. That's why we weren't getting all of it. So those went delinquent. And then when they come through and did this settlement, that's what we wound up getting. But again, that's just in a group of treasures back and forth in a chat. So I don't have confirmation of what that actual settlement was. Just something I heard this afternoon.
Okay.
I will have that. Unfortunately, what I did...
So they asked for a reduction of fifty-two percent and they settled at twelve or...
Let me get that information and share with... Yeah, it's just...
I know, I understand that.
I'm confused too, so I'm going to let that go.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
All right. Is that all, Mrs. Bowers?
It did come through, so that's a positive for us. Yeah, we've been waiting for a while.
Yeah. Huge.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Mrs. Spiege.
Yes, I'd like to recommend to the board at this time to approve Item Six A. That is a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five catalyst counseling contract.
Looking for a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five catalyst counseling contract as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Just would like to remind the board that this is no charge to the district. These are counselors that come into our schools and work with families at their insurance, with their insurance. So this is a wonderful program and we appreciate the number of counselors they place in our buildings.
They've been here for several years now.
We like Edgewood.
Good, great. We like them. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So if you update items, I just want to do a shout-out to all the administrators and staff. We are working hard. They have been out visible in the hallways and classrooms, greeting students. And it's just been fun to see. So I feel so blessed to work here in this district among these great people. So kudos to our staff and our administrators. Our custodians did a great job getting our buildings together. Appreciate all the work and direction under our Director of Health and Safety. She's been working with revising our ordering process with cafeteria and menus. And that's been a transition of a lot of hours, and I certainly appreciate you, Alicia, for what you do. I would like to say, I did get an email up here saying, "How come there's less food at the high school?" And to my understanding, we took, there's enough food for everybody. But what, if you recall, all the monthly meetings, we talked about an overage in spending. So to reduce that cafeteria cost, they're trying to have maybe just one extra option a day instead of five extra options. So in the past, you might be able to get a bacon sandwich or biscuits and gravy. Now they're saying one day will be biscuits and gravy, another day will be like an extra sandwich. That's just an example and what they're doing. So I think what's happening is it's looking more bare because all those options are not available at one time. So that is a transition. And Alicia's just going to be putting out some information to our community about that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we keep the taco bar?
I don't know. Alicia, do we have the taco bar? Every day or just one day a week?
Every day. Every day, okay.
Well, then that's good news. So we do have more than one option, it sounds like. We'd like to remind the board, we like, we're studying enrollment, where we are. I always like to look where are we in projection to the previous year. Our enrollment as of today is three thousand four hundred and sixty students. Last week, it was three thousand four hundred and thirty-three, so it's slightly up. I will tell you that intentionally, we did not approve ninety-three open enrollment applications. And the reason being is that they either owe money or they missed more than sixty days of school, which is a third of the school year. So we strategically did not approve ninety-three. And we're still out three thousand four hundred and sixty, which I'm anxious to see how that compares.
Or sixteen.
Sixteen? Oh, we're down. See, I'm so sorry. Last week, we were thirty-three, three thousand four hundred and thirty-three. Is that strictly because of, we got kids off the list that maybe didn't show up the first week of school?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got record requests and...
So we're slightly down from that. But certainly not, I would think we'd be down even more with ninety-three applications we didn't approve. So we're working on that because that certainly means funding.
So are Butler Tech numbers included in that or is that...?
They are included in that.
It's on your enrollment sheet there as well and your financial report, JBS is one thirty-three.
And you heard me mention last month too. Typically, I do not sign off on students quitting school. I have had two applications of just some severe mental health issues that they're either eighteen or a week away from being eighteen. And in my entire career, I've never done that. But when you're ill and working with many doctors, going to school is not your top priority. And we did that. So certainly are working with families through those issues. Last month, you heard we talked about the state mandate. Governor DeWine is mandating that all staff, all the way from preschool teacher up to the superintendent, receive training, course hours in the science of reading. And as of today, thirty-eight percent of our staff have provided that documentation. So they're working through that mandate. I bet they're looking for their payment in November for that because our first payment coming from the state will be after the November date. Our next community engagement meeting is September twelfth at six-thirty here at the high school media center. Hope to see people out that may be interested in talking about our facilities. I will tell you, it is a timely conversation because you have heard us mention that we have a substitute... What do you call that? A substitute what? Just basically a levy that expires December of twenty-twenty-four. Is that correct? And then we could start, we will start seeing the difference of the money January twenty-twenty-five. And I've asked, having to sit down and look at the numbers because of our five-year forecast that's certified in November is close to what it was that was certified in May, we have work to do. We're not going to be able to sustain our current programs on our current budget without that substitute money. So it's time to really work with our community, talk about, you know, what are some options? And so I'm going to ask that we have a board work session maybe towards the end of October, closer to the five-year forecast getting certified, and talk about what our next steps are. Hopefully, this substitute, which is no new money, will pass and we can sustain as we are today. Just want to plant that seed and be very transparent.
And I think we're going to need to really work on a communication plan to make sure that everybody understands that we are having a levy fall off and this is essentially replacing a levy that has expired. And I think people will be more receptive to that because I don't think that people realize that, that we've got a levy falling off. A lot of people that I've talked to, I don't think are in the know. So I think the way we deliver that, the way we talk about it is going to...
I appreciate you saying that. So I've asked, I don't know if you noticed, but the city of Trenton put out an invitation going to a business luncheon in October to start talking... going to a business luncheon in October to start talking to, um, people. And we're hoping just to do a state of the schools address, just talk about the facts about academics and finances and our programs, and, uh, hope to get out in households if we're invited, into school buildings, and just asking everybody, you know, who can we talk to? I believe Alicia Adams got me to talk to the Peewee football families coming up here. So just wherever we can get in and discuss, we're going to deliver our state of schools. I don't think it's going to be a huge campaign. It is, it's either we do the renewal, we don't. It's not new money. Just get the facts out and see where it falls.
Uh, I mean, that's not going to be enough though, is it, or is that?
That's, she's, she's certifying the next five-year forecast. If, Andrew, based on the five-year forecast that we looked at in May, no, it's not going to be enough. I'm hoping with Patty shared in August that we came out a little bit ahead of what we predicted. I'm hoping that plays out. So she wants to make sure that the first payroll with the raises, we have a whole month of that in place, that she's going to start working on the five-year forecast that has to be certified in October, then we're going to go out early.
Can I just add here, oh, but you probably say a lot that at least eighty-five percent of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. That's why I've asked to have a whole month of looking at September, what those are. Um, I was actually in here calling a lot of our new hires this weekend and saying, would you please get out there and enroll so we know what they're electing? Um, it almost doubles from a single to a family plan, so it's huge. When you stretch out ten, twelve thousand dollars per person over a five-year forecast. So I did tell Kelly, if we could just wait and let, let September happen, that way that we know that our salaries and things look like and our benefit costs and all that, that will give us the most accurate information. So we're going to start working on that in October. We're hoping that he will come to the table with us toward the end of October so you can see where we're at with that forecast and, and make some decisions moving forward, what, what our education here looks like, what our, what we do or what we don't do.
My class is always full, so I'm very hopeful with the money that Patty shared in July, August, that we did not spend as much as we anticipated, and with the Rocky money that we just learned about today. It's not a windfall, but it certainly adds up, and the more you can save today, multiplies over a five-year forecast. I'm hopeful we can sustain with just a substitute. You know, this is not the time we want after new money, so we're going to sit down and just sharpen our pencil and see what that's going to look like.
What I do think, you know, there's been a lot of work done. We've talked about this up here on stage multiple times, the work that you and your staff is doing. And I, I think we've been, as a district, we've been fiscally responsible for the last, very fiscally responsible for the last seven years, and we are stretching the dollars as far as they can be stretched, and I, and hopefully people are watching this videos, and then when they come to these meetings, they see that because, you know, quite honestly, we saved a whole lot more money last year than we even thought we were going to in, in the beginning. And that was because of the work that you guys are doing. So we're, we're definitely using the money and, and taking it as far as it'll go. So, uh, you know, hopefully people see that.
We take it seriously. I'm sure Patty would say, Kelly, please don't do that. We do things for kids that we need to do what's best. So we're not cutting everything. We want to educate them and, and we want to raise our results. At the same time, we're trying to be very consistent and, and fluid, uh, with our money and not, and not overspend, so sometimes it's tug-of-war across the table. We do, okay. All right.
All right.
Anything else on that? Okay, I just want to, um, let you know that Scott Clemens is working with all the athletic directors. It is a hot week this week, and certainly monitoring the weather, the heat index, working with the athletic directors to determine, do we need to delay any games, make sure that we're doing the best, uh, decisions for our, our players and their health. So Scott, I appreciate you taking that seriously and, and staying up on that. Mark, shout out for you. Uh, you did a great job in hosting and facilitating and speaking Saturday in Hamilton at the Veterans Military Recognition. I know your company donated quite a bit of money to the military families in suicide prevention. Um, you were an awesome speaker. I actually text him on Saturday and said, I've never seen anybody upstage the sheriff, but I think you gave him a birthday's money if you asked me. So kudos to you on that. And then a happy birthday to Scott Fussnecker. He celebrated a, a new decade. So we want to celebrate that and just a shout out to Scott. That concludes my-
You look excited.
Yes.
I look what?
Excited.
Oh, yeah.
Just what he wants to do.
I had an art, uh, piece of mail, and I tried to get over that because it was in the mailbox the other day. I had to double check if it was my name, and it was.
I've never signed up for it, but I sure liked paying the senior price at the Peewee game yesterday. So it's my first time I've ever, ever done it. Came in handy. That concludes the update.
Thank you, Mrs. Spike. Next up, we have items from board members. Mr. Messerschmidt, would you like to start?
Yes, sir. So you talked a little bit about Saturday and the Veteran Appreciation Day, and, um, Edgewood High School presented a junior ROTC color guard to support that event. They extended the NACIS colors. They looked exceptionally, uh, good up there. Um, great job. You know, the thing I talked about on stage is, you know, those, those students volunteered their time on a Saturday to go do that. And, you know, I think it says a lot about them personally, and I think it says about our program. You know, honestly, I didn't realize this until, um, we started looking for a junior ROTC color guard. Yep, there's only two districts in Butler County that still has a junior ROTC program, us and Hamilton, that's it. And I, I think that says a lot about priorities and, and where we're at, and the fact that we've been able to hang on to that program. I think it's important. I think it makes a difference, and it, it was awesome to see them up there on stage. Doug, I appreciate you coming out and being there. Kelly, you being there, it was a, it was a great night. Um, so the other thing I just wanted to kind of talk about, I, I came last year, Kelly, the first day when you got all the staff and everybody in here. I wasn't able to come this year, but, um, you bring a lot of energy, and it just feels like there's a lot of energy in the district right now. I can tell you that it's resonating with the, the kids. My daughter has started, uh, seventh grade at the middle school, and she comes home every night. She just talks very fondly of her teachers and the experience that she's having, and I can tell that she really, she, she loves her teachers, and she enjoys going to school when she's just super excited and super motivated. I think the work that, that your team and, and district is doing is really, the kids are, the kids are seeing it. And me and Gary actually, we were talking just the other day. I haven't had any real calls or anybody-
Well, let's not say that yet.
Nobody seems to be, everybody seems to be pretty happy about the way things are doing. So just great start to the year. It's good to have kids back in school, and, um, appreciate all the work the junior team are doing.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Mr. Pressler?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing.
How about, I think, Mrs. Ashcraft?
Well, I'm just going to throw caution to the wind and say that in all my time on the board, and I've had thirteen years starting, like thirteen starts of school, this is the first year I've not had phone calls about buses or emails about busing or issues or first date jitters or anything like that. So whatever is going on, we're doing what it goes.
The book doesn't drop too much.
Well, it does, it's my fault, I'm sorry. But like in thir- like thir- this is my, what, thirteenth start of school? And nothing. I was like, does school really start? My kids are going, but I don't want them to really start because I haven't heard anything, so.
There's a lot of truth to that.
Well, they're piloting. I love this GPS. I can't wait for Shane to come and talk about it, but he has it on a few buses. And there has been a late bus that's been a pattern, and so he can look right at it and go, oh, they're staying too much time here, over here. So it's, it works for management, and it also works to help you find your child and where they're at and whatnot, so.
So congratulations to all the teachers and administrators. That's an awesome start to school.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashcraft. Mr. Pressler? Good tonight? Well, I was gonna, I was gonna talk about what a great start we had, but I'm a little bit afraid to because I'm going to have, we're already, but, but, and there's a lot of truth to that. I mean, I've, I've had ten years, um, maybe not eleven years. And this is the first time that I haven't had any calls, so, um, something's working. Something's working. And welcome to all the new employees and all the veteran employees. We appreciate everything you do. One other thing that I did hear a lot about was the cell phone policy. Some people reached out and said they're very happy, very happy with how that's going, and that's very understandable. That's all I got, so I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. It is six forty.
All right, we're back in session eight sev- excuse me, it's eight seventeen. And we're going to go move to personnel items. We'll look for a motion for the approval of the personnel items as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Now I'm going to look for a motion for the twenty-four, twenty-five OPSY MOU wage increase as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This time I'm going to look for a motion for the twenty-four, twenty-five OPSY MOU of the bus route bending.
So moved.
Mr. Andrew Pressler, come alive. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And to finish it off on item D, I'm looking for a motion for the twenty-five ROTC MOU.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This time, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. It is eight nineteen.